Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, February seventh at nine AM. Uh, Galen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, uh, so we're gonna start off, uh, before we start off, um, we, we made some changes at our last work session, uh, about how we receive public comment. And, um, let me just kind of roll that out for you. It was actually, uh, the new Commissioner Susie Hemrick's idea. And I think it's a really good idea to increase the ability for people to engage when we have, uh, different items on the agenda. And, uh, I know there's folks here today that are interested in talking about things that are not on the agenda. And, um, I'll explain how that works. So, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, there's the ability for public comment on, any item that, that people would be interested in. We do ask that you keep it to three minutes. And if we have ten different people that are saying the exact same thing, maybe we could pick a person that could be the representative for the group. I, I'm not totally wed to that if, because I definitely think people want to have their own, you know, individual input, but if, if we start hearing the same exact thing over and over and over again, I think we'll, we'll try and find a way to kind of streamline that, but I think we can kind of play that by ear. And then, once we get to the actual, uh, agenda, as we bring up items, people, we're gonna make sure to, uh, kind of hear a report and then give people the opportunity to weigh in and then we can, uh, make a decision after that. And I don't remember, were we gonna allow something at the end? As a catch-all?
I wasn't worried about the end. I was worried about the separate things. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so. But I think there really shouldn't be any reason to speak at the end if you've had an opportunity to bring up whatever you want at the beginning and then, uh, speak on the different items. So, um, it sounds to me like we have quite a few people. Can we see a, uh, um, hands raised of people that want to speak this morning about? Uh, okay. Anybody else?
This public comment?
Yes, public comment.
On anything?
Yeah, yeah, three, four. Is that about it? You also?
Yes.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, good, good morning. Uh, Monte Kurtz of Albu. I had a few people asking about the two upcoming meetings that are coming up for the DSP and, um, whether or not that included a discussion about the secondary access going into Juniper Canyon?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, uh, I just kind of come up as you will.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Extremely. Most people know who I am. Some people don't, but addressing the water issues, the well contamination, the water contamination regarding the mining site. And, uh, we've been back and forth and around the horn multiple times with the DEQ, Oregon Health Authority. I think you're all aware of what's going on, so you don't need to hammer that out again. But regarding that request, Mr. Fitch couldn't be here this morning. He's in deposition. Uh, we're back to where we were a year and a half or so ago, asking the court to suspend or terminate this operation, mining operation, till we can figure out what's going on. And, and so Mr. Newton asked him to come and he has a, a presentation regarding the, the water contamination and the extent of it.
And are you able to do that presentation within three minutes?
I, I can, I can simply just pop through what we've, what's been submitted and things like that. I am, I am absolutely perfect. Since I, uh, I'm gonna be talking about the water issue, you could take my three minutes.
Perfect.
Um, so, uh, Jim Newton, Cassidou Engineering, um, out of N.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? If I can't hear you, most people can't.
So my name is Jim Newton. Most of you folks here probably know who I am. Uh, Jim Newton, Engineering. I'm a licensed professional geologist, engineer, water right examiner here in Oregon. Um, I do a lot of work in Central Oregon, from Primeville and the area, rural areas, specifically. Um, so I guess one of the biggest things that, um, I'm here to talk about, I guess, which I know, um, Seth and Brian have both heard me go on about this before, but one of the, I guess, one of the concerns that we have, and we've expressed by communication with, um, both DEQ and Oregon Department of Geology, Mineral Industries, who regulates mining in Oregon. And frankly, Oregon Health Authority, drinking water services, I mean, this, this issue has actually been discussed on the Senate, US Senate Board in Washington DC just a few months ago, uh, trying to help the area. And the biggest concern that we have is that, um, based on some water samples uh, that have been collected and analyzed by lab and then essentially provided to me where I, and I went out and, you know, precision located with a GPS all the wells and was able to assign those test results to those wells. Um, it, it looks like there's an issue and the issue looks like it is, you know, groundwater flows from one direction to another from east to west in this, generally in this area and the wells that are on the east side of the mine uh, of the Night River Woodward mine site show, you know, kind of a background condition. Specifically manganese is what we, what's kind of popped up on most of the wealth that's as very consistent as elevated. So the area up gradient upstream of the groundwater from the mine site um, has, you know, kind of a background condition, what it looks like to be, you know, roughly point one, point one, two milligrams per liter. Oregon Health Authority, EPA, um, they consider three hundred or point three milligrams per liter to be, uh, kind of that threshold above that can have such concerns. Uh, and in some cases, significant health concerns. So, the area that's located downstream of the mine, and it looks like the closer you get, the higher the concentration get. We've gotten test results in manganese that are pushing point five milligrams per liter. So, um, you know, some of the wells are at point one, seven, two, point four, eight, four, point four, nine, four milligrams per liter. So you're well above the level that has been accepted by EPA, Oregon Health Authority, California. Um, you know, anybody that's ever studied manganese conditions on, on, on human health, um, it's an issue. And when I lay out, and I couldn't give you a flash drive, we could throw it up on the screen if you'd like. But if you look at the site, you know, we have water quality data upgrading. We have water quality data down gradient, up gradient. It looks like there's a background condition downgrade. It's significantly elevated. The only thing we haven't been able to get access to is the actual Night River Mine Site where they have three monitoring wells. They have open pits because they're actively mining in the aquifer um, to get water samples. And essentially every roadblock has been thrown up to us up to and including, unless I'm willing to trespass and do that, we aren't allowed access to that site. It certainly looks like the evidence as a, someone that practices hydrogeology in Oregon and I guess I gotta think about this. I think, uh, I think I've been, I'm, I'm twenty, just over twenty-one years of practicing professionally in Oregon as a hydrogeologist. Um, I've been licensed now for what takes five years experience. So that's sixteen years I've been licensed in Oregon as a geologist. Um, this is what I do. Um, I've noted in the past that, in fact, this is the first and only mine site that I've not worked for the mining contractor. But let's face it, we're, we're in a community that it's rural, groundwater is their source for drinking water. If there's an outside influence that's influencing that water quality, we need to be able to identify that. And if it's natural, it's natural. We need to identify if it is or not. And we're simply not being allowed access to the site to take water samples. And I know a lot of the folks in the room are like, are gonna be saying, hey, you know, just shut it down, shut it down. But, you know, as, as a, as someone that this is what I do and as a recommendation of the county is, you know, if they want to go on with increasing the potential footprint and potential to impact groundwater quality condition, it could certainly be a condition that the county places that access and/or a monitoring program be set up that's satisfactory to the county. I mean, that's, and/or agencies, right? I mean, the agencies aren't allowing us to get access to the site to collect samples. I don't know why that is. I, I've never had that experience before. I mean, I, I can cite numerous conditions in Oregon and the West where the agencies are the folks that force access to a site for a conditions just like this. And they, it may be warranted when it's done and it may not be maybe, but at least we can at least check that box off and say, hey, we tested, we didn't, we're not asking Night River to pay for anything. Um, in fact, I, I, I haven't sent, I've been working on this particular issue for a year and a half. I haven't sent anybody a bill for the time that I've spent. And the reason for that is I don't ever want for the, the folks that are gonna pay for this, being Dick and all of his neighbors to say, well, we'd really like to do the sampling, Jim, but we can't afford it because we paid your bill. I haven't billed them a penny for this. So this is important. This is what you do. The, the right way to do it is to do mining is to make sure you do it responsibly. Not saying they're doing it irresponsibly, but why won't they give us access to collect water samples and at least check that box and say it's an issue or it's not. I think the county has that capacity to withhold permitting to at least not increase the potential footprint in, in the mine site.
Okay, uh, yeah, I really appreciate your comments, uh. And my understanding is, and maybe not to put Will on the spot, but I think, um, I think it would be important to talk to Will Van Bacter, the Community Development Director, about what our abilities to do those things are. We're, we're happy to do whatever we can to protect the citizens of Crook County. But, um, there's some new faces here, but there's some faces that have been here to talk in the past. What we need is a state agency to make the finding that there is an issue there. And until we have that, that, that's not something the county has the ability to make that decision, right? And ju- just let me, let me finish it up and then happy to hear your comments and my comments. And what we've been doing is we've been working extremely hard, um, putting, sending letters to the state saying, we need to hear this. Um, we've talked to our state representative, our state senator. Uh, we've sent recently a letter to, uh, DEQ saying that, you know, under their rules, they don't investigate, uh, industrial water, right? But they've said it's not that, that's not the issue. So then we've said, well, then if that's not the issue, then you need to come in and check this out and figure out what it is. And so we've done that. I've spoken with, uh, Senator uh, Wyden's office and asked them to send letters from the federal delegation to DEQ saying, you know, why have we not heard this? Why are we keep hearing these messages? Um, I've got a meeting with the governor coming up next month. I plan to bring it up. Um, when I, when I sit down with her and explain how important it is to our community that, that did we find this out and it, you know, I'm where you are. I don't care who, what causes, what is causing it. We need to find what's going on and fix the problem, regardless of the cause.
So just to give you some examples, um, because you do bring up great points, right? So one of the biggest issues that we've talked about this before is that Crook County doesn't have the technical staff to be able to sit down and review if, if even the, the basic level of reviewing water quality to go, what does this mean to us, right? And I will be the first person to say that, sure, I have letters behind my name and I, you know, I'm licensed and registered and all this stuff in Oregon to to be able to do these things. And how many times do you get to turn on the news and you hear that, well, you know, the, the folks that regulate this said it was okay and boy, the FAA said it was okay and the door on a plane got sucked up at sixteen thousand feet over Portland, right? So sure, that happens all the time. But one of the concerns that I have is in very directly to your point in who the county reaches out to. So there's multiple pieces to it, right? So when you look at the groundwater quality, uh, Oregon administrative rules, their DEQ rules. Okay, so they're under DEQ's administration or DEQ section. When you look at mining in Oregon, it's regulated by DoGAMI, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries. So the, a mining and reclamation permit that is administered, um, is everything from, they wrote the permit application. They administer it, they collect the fees, they, they slap your hands when you do right or do wrong. They pat you on the back when you do right. That's all handled by DoGAMI. So under DoGAMI's permitting, they have requirements for DEQ permits or DEQ requirements that you have to satisfy DEQ rules. DEQ defaults in this case, they give permitting premises to DoGAMI because EQ doesn't want to deal with mining. Because let's face it, from a, from a practical sense, EQ doesn't look at mining as a, as an attribute to anything. They're, to, to put it frankly, they're inherently disposed against, proposed against something that in their mind could degrade the environment, okay? So they default that to DoGAMI to say, hey, make sure they do it in a way that doesn't mess with us and we have to step in. Um, and we'll let you, we'll let you take care of it. The catch is, is that under a DoGAMI mining operation permit, there's a few things that have to be checked. One, still have to follow the rules. The other is, is that DoGAMI cannot advance or maintain an active mining permit or reclamation site without county authorization. And that authorization is in two things. The biggest one is land use compatibility statement. And so land use compatibility statement, just like a conditional use permit, which is the other method, both are conditional. They're conditioned based on what's the county know at the time they were signed and approved. If conditions change from the county's perspective after the, and it could literally be, I've signed it, you walked out of the room, I got a phone call and it changed my opinion. I hang up and I call you back into the room and say, that's not worth the ink that I wrote it with because the conditions have changed from the county's perspective and we're rescinding that lutz or we're rescinding that, that um, conditional use permit. And I can, I can say as, as a unfortunate resident of Deschutes County, Deschutes County rescinds lutz every day. Um, and they throw folks in front of the county hearings officer and county commissioners, whether it's right or wrong, it happens. It happens in Oregon. It happens in adjacent counties. I am certain that if we dug through county files, I am certain that Crook, Crook County at some point has rescinded a lutz because conditions changed or the county became aware of conditions that changed after that lutz or conditional use permit was approved. That is the, that's the biggest hammer that the county has when it comes to DoGAMI because DoGAMI cannot advance, maintain or administer an application of permit, uh, mining permit or reclamation plan frankly, if the county that that site resides in does not continually approve of it being there.
So, so you're really starting to dip into Will's?
Absolutely. And I think
That's why we have a, and so I, Will, are you willing to jump in here and have a conversation about, you know, what our abilities are to do? Um, and how we can decide to move forward or not move forward? Because everything I've understood is without some type of specific finding and not just, and I, and this sounds, I'm, I'm not trying to say that you guys aren't right or that there's, this isn't real, but without some kind of finding from a state agency or some agency, that it's very difficult for us to then rescind that. Once, once we have that information, that's, I think, a lot what you're talking about is the, that has changed the the, the playing field of saying, you know, something has changed. And but I, I, I really appreciate Will kind of weighing in on that.
His microphone is not working. Um, so he said, if you want, we can, we can swing by his office and we can bring something up.
Sure. So I guess the biggest piece, and, and maybe this is the, my, my final word on this is that from a, from the county's perspective, the county is, should rely on state agencies that regulate these sorts of things, right? They should rely on DEQ and DoGAMI collectively to be able to make a ruling. And the condition could be that the, that the, and, and I will pick specifically on the expansion permit because that, I think, is what the county's biggest pick is, correct? Um, is that until the county receives official communication from DoGAMI and DEQ collectively, that the site has been shown to not have an influence to degrade groundwater quality. And I can provide Will the OARs. It's in communication that we have back and forth between me and the state. That by Oregon administrative rule, that it's been satisfied and an ongoing plan to maintain the quality of groundwater and not degrade from background condition, that the county cannot effectively move forward in maintaining this county authorization. The county can certainly do that. It's done all the time. If you, if the state agencies can't be satisfied, the county can't say without technical expertise that it's okay because those state agencies have to do something. The catch is, and, and this, and I will tell you, here's the hurdle that we all have. The state agencies do not want to engage. They just don't. And that's the biggest hurdle. So as the county and as the mine operator, if, if everybody seems like it's a great idea to move forward, then, then it should be. DEQ and DoGAMI should step up to the plate and tell you that it's fine. That's what the county should, that, that should be the hook the county has is DoGAMI and, and DEQ because there are DEQ rules. Okay, so it should be written or could be written by the county that until you receive um, official communication that DEQ and DoGAMI has reviewed groundwater conditions at the site and approved that the site could be moved forward based on the ability to maintain groundwater quality in conjunction with Oregon administrative rules that the county will maintain the ability to either approve or rescind the ability for that site to be mined.
Yeah, again, I, I'm happy for you to have a conversation with Will.
I would really enjoy that.
Conversation with us. I wish his microphone was working today, but, uh, yeah, no. If there's something that we can do, I think everybody up here is willing to do it. Is that, I mean,
Yeah, sure.
I, I, I mean, we've been, I, 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 I'm telling you guys, we've been looking for different angles to help fix the situation from, from the beginning. And, and so i- if we, if there's new information, then this sounds somewhat new to me. Um, and this is something that, that is a, a manageable thing. I, I think everybody up here is ready to, to do whatever they can. Um, I, I just know that we've, we've tried a lot of these things and, and we've, we've run into dead ends and what we've found the most effective thing we can do for the citizens is to push on the state and um, get them to engage and you know, we're gonna continue to do that and anything in addition that we find that we can, we can do. So does that?
I, I mean, I, I think that's, that's, that's the best we can hope for, right?
Yeah.
I mean, as a group, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Okay. Great. You gotta come up and tell you, say your name and address. Thank you guys for coming.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but, uh, my name's Tracy Underback and I was a bulldozer here in the town. And it's, it, we need to understand what's happening so we can protect our clients.
I'm sorry, can, can you, she getting picked up by the mic? The reason we have the mic is so that we can write down what happened. You gotta sit down and talk to the mic.
I mean, it's, um, we've been attending these meetings and it, and it does sound like there's been a lot of press on the state and, you know, and then they push back and, and then it's just back and forth and, and something has got to stop. And we're hoping that you, as our people, you know, are, are wanting to help take care of this because it's not just a matter of, you know, some elevation somewhere. But I have grandkids that they can't drink their water. Um, they can't bathe in their water. And, um, the animals, um, they're, they're being born dead, the, the calves. And the chickens, we, we watch the chickens hatch and it's just within minutes, they start this fastic neurological death that's horrible. And this is a really big deal. And it's not, um, it's not just because of my grandkids and, and these animals, but that's irrigation water, you know, that the animals, we can't, we can't, we can't ship in water for the, you know, the cattle all day. This is not, the cost is, it's just getting really out of hand. And we really need help instead of just trying to push back at the state back and forth because that's not working. So.
I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, but what I'm just trying to explain to everyone is that those are the people that decide. I mean, it's almost reminiscent of COVID where the masks and people will come to us and say, you can stop making us wear the masks. And I would say it's the state making us wear the masks. It's not the county. And so we can be your advocate to move up to that next level. And like, uh, we just said, if there's anything we can do within our privy, we're happy to, we're willing to do it.
We appreciate it.
And, and we're gonna work hard to get that done. But again, what we've identified is the state, it's, it's, it's an issue at the state level. And I know that's difficult for a lot of people to understand that there's different levels of government and what we can do and what we can affect and what we can't. And I, and I'm just trying to be really clear on what we, we can and can't do. A- again, if, if we find ways that we can be effective here locally and, and, and make a change. Uh, I think you've seen everybody nod their heads, yes, if, if we find an opportunity to go down that route, we're gonna do it. But I just want to be clear. So go ahead.
I, I want you all to encourage you again to write letters. I'm saving your letters. I'm doing a hard copy and I'm doing electronic copy. And I'm gonna move forward, but I'd like to get as many letters and ammunition as I can. It's, it's a sad thing. And again, we, we went ahead and wrote the letter. We didn't say it was mining. We just said we have a problem, hoping that that would trigger. And I think it's been three weeks, Eric. Probably three weeks. We need to follow up. We need to make a call and see what's going on with our letter. We've had no response, have we?
I'm unaware of any response.
Yeah, so, but thank you very much. And again, write your letters. And the pictures that were sent were wonderful. Those pictures of the little, the kids, it was, I mean, it wasn't wonderful for what the kid, the kids. But it was very good to have that to, to, to put together.
Thank you for
Yeah, no problem at all. And yeah, just to, uh, echo Susie's comment, please send us information, any information you have that we can pass on. Um, that just makes, puts us in a stronger position to be able to request. Um, okay, we're getting close to heading back to the regular scheduled meeting. Is there, um, is there anybody else that wants to weigh in? And remember, we're, our, feel free to call our office instead of a time. All three of us are more than happy to meet with anybody. I've met with a lot of folks out there in the crowd already. And, uh, I'm happy to meet with anybody that wants to talk about it and give me, if, maybe they don't like standing up in front of a crowd and talking. Uh, I'm happy to hear your story or receive an email or, or written letter.
Out of curiosity, how many of you would raise your hand that are here about the water? Thank you very much. Got you, Deb.
Okay.
I gave up my three minutes.
You can have your three minutes if you really want it.
It won't even take three minutes.
Okay.
Adam Mikulski, I live in three, nine, nine, two Northwest Danzig. I'm right across the street from Woodward and veneer. I think I guess a question to the county would be if, if something is found, are you willing to go forward on it? And, and, and my comment is, is we don't have any water issues now, but we met with DoGAMI when they came to the library with the other folks here. They asked what they could do for us. We asked them to go into the, into the pit and dig up or, or, or inspect it. There's nothing been done since then. We've been monitoring our water from day one that they came in across the street at Woodworks. We don't have any issues. But I think what's gonna burn everybody is if they go over into veneers, if we don't hold off and it goes over to veneers and then now we get affected, there's your, there's your evidence that something, something bad going on. And DoGAMI actually used our well, you know, the, the test that we had to say there is nothing wrong. They went down to the second aquifer, they got a well test from there. They only use two and they're calling it science. Well, that's not science for two wells, but what, but you know what happens is if they get across the street and then they ruin our wells and then maybe the dairy and all that, who's gonna fix it? I mean, the livestock and everything else. Is it the county's responsibility? Is it Knife River? Do we have lawsuits? How, how does that gonna happen? So that's my comment. If you need anything else, I'm gonna contact your office, but I know certain things they've done over there. I could, you know, I spoke here before on that. I'm, I'm willing to talk to you guys, but I don't want to wait till the last minute. And then all of a sudden they start mining and then everybody else's water is ruined and then we're stuck with it because they're not gonna fix it. So anyway.
Okay, I, I really appreciate that. And, and we are, we are working on it and we hear you guys about how important this is. We do truly hear you.
All right. Thanks for giving my three minutes.
Hello. Hi, my name's Mike Boynton. I'm a broker at Coldwell Banker here in Bryanville. I also live, uh, over on the backside of Grizzly Mountain, not too far from the mining site. Um, one of the things I'm concerned with is these commercial wells that Knife River is putting in up there. Um, I've got word of three of them. I think the first one's already operating, pumping several hundred gallons a minute. Um, Central Oregon has been in a drought for what, four, five years now? So for them to be allowed to put in these commercial wells and pump this kind of water i- is kind of absurd to me. I don't know who's permitting these wells. But I think maybe putting a stop to that could, uh, maybe be part of a solution to, to, you know, slowing down their operation until we can figure out what is going on. Um, and the fact, like I said, just that much water being pumped out is just insane when we're in a drought. Um, I know water rights are already being cut back drastically to farmers. Uh, in a couple of years, they're going to be getting cut back even more. And so these wells are just, just crazy to me that they're being permitted and allowed to use this much water on a mining operation when we could be using it to irrigate our fields for hay to feed our cows.
I brought that subject up at the planning commission because I, I totally agree with you that that's wrong. They just were able and they just were awarded these water rights and basically it was too bad. That's the way it goes. But I totally completely agree with you.
Yeah. I mean, what, whatever happened to senior water rights? You know, that, that's law. That is going back to the 18th century. They, there's no way, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just baffled that they were able to do this. And there's got to be something that you guys can do, just definitely and say, hey, this ain't right. I mean, it's, sorry to be upset, but.
No, no, no.
I totally agree with you. Brought it up planning, at planning department, you know, planning commission. And it was just, well, that's just the way it is, kind of an answer. And I, I agree with you.
Somebody's got to be responsible for this and, and be held accountable. It's getting, I mean, it's, it's just bad.
Because if a farmer would have asked for that, we would have been told no.
Yep, exactly.
And that, that was what disturbed me, but yet they handed it on a silver platter. I, I totally and completely am on your side on this.
Or if a farmer was to say, well, I'm going to do it anyways and go punch a well, they would probably lose their land because they would be fined so hefty. Yet here they are just three commercial wells. Holy cow. So is there, I mean.
Again, the, when, when you move to water, it's a state issue. It's, 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 it's something that the state.
It is, but who's permitting these?
Water resources.
Water, it's a state, it's a state agency. Excuse me. It's a state agency that permits the water use.
And it was brought, it was brought up way at the first hearing. I was the one that brought it up. And I, I totally, like I say, agree with you, but it's like, too bad. We're higher than you and this is what we're doing.
Yeah. All right. Well, that's what I had. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Going, going. All right, we're moving on. Thank you guys very much for showing up and please send us more information as you have it.
Yeah, keep sending me letters.
All right. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Is, um, Shanda here? What up?
Hi, I'm Shanda. I'm the executive director of the Humane Society. I'm Jessica. I'm the shelter manager.
And then do we just tell you to flip the page?
Yeah.
Just give me a good little thing on.
Uh, we left handouts on the front desk for anybody that would like it about our presentation. It just all works as frugally as possible with a very small staff and a group of dedicated volunteers, uh, serving a huge area. Creek County's only animal shelter has a variety of programs and services for animals and the people that love them. Assisting sheriff's department sometimes leads to long lengthy stays for animals involved in court cases. Creek County residents enjoy the chance to volunteer with the animals. We often get school groups and company groups such as Facebook and Apple. Uh, we also give community service opportunities for those that need to serve hours.
One of my favorite things about it is that you can go walk dogs. If everybody doesn't know that, you can go up and lunchtime and walk a dog. And the dog really enjoys it and it's, it's a pretty fun day.
The population has exploded since our shelter was built. Cost of raised a lot since 1995. The number of animals we care for remains steady, but also limited to space. We have, we have months long waits for animals that are trying to be surrendered that we just don't have the space to put them. Sarah, you're good. Sorry.
So funding for, uh, animals is very difficult compared to other nonprofit missions. Grants are very competitive and rarely cover operations or building costs. And our donations are largely dependent on the economy.
We did an informal survey through email blast and social media. Posts in a variety of groups nearly all supported the new shelter. Some have expressed willingness to pay increased taxes.
Uh, the majority of our shelter is beyond the ability to repair and undersized for the growing community. Um, if you haven't taken a tour of our shelter, we invite anybody to come take a tour. Um, if you don't have time for a tour, we do have one on our, uh, on our website.
And then if you haven't seen, we are finished with construction plans and specifications for phase one, which would be the dog wing, dog kettles. Since we can't afford to replace the entire facility at once, we will do this in phases. H S O has a third of the, the cost to contribute to help with the cost of the new building. There is more information on our website at thehsod.org. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, not, can you remind me how much you're asking for?
Five hundred extra.
Five hundred extra.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's made sense to me. What, what do you think, Susie?
I, I don't have any problem. I guess we need to ask the money man.
Yeah, we can do that.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you guys for all your hard work. I know you guys really put a lot of time into it. Uh, have so many great volunteers. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
We have lots of puppies if people want to play with them. And a lot of dogs needing walks.
I met Chloe up there, my daughter, the other day and we took the husky out.
Trout.
Trout. And it was a great dog, but it was clearly dinnertime because he didn't want to hang out with us. He just kept on staring at the building. So he was definitely a smart dog. He knew, he knew when that food was coming.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertainer motion?
I make a motion to, uh, oh, here, I went on to their PowerPoint. Let me see. Make it a very, I make a motion to increase the service contract from three thousand per month to thirty-five hundred.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good morning. Katie, I'm the Health and Human Services Director. I, I lost my colleagues from Veteran Services. They are booked solid today. So I had a very small window to be with us, but I'll get them back on the agenda to introduce themselves. Um, we are actively scheduling appointments with our Veteran Services Officer. And, um, and they are booked for out a couple of weeks to get through a backlog. Um, but they're answering the phones and getting people in as soon as possible, which is great news.
Good job.
Yes, I, uh, I wanted to give a, a shout out to you all for your support in the transition of Veteran Services and making sure that it's available and at the highest standard for our veterans in the county. Um, also our partners in Deshute County and, um, Lake County helped out tremendously while we were understaffed. And I, I want to acknowledge that too, that they were very helpful.
And I want to thank you and acknowledge you for taking on this program and overseeing this. It's another one of the many things that you do. Muchly appreciated.
Yeah, I totally agree.
And I totally agree too, Katie. You do a good job.
Little bit off subject, but I met, uh, the new, uh, head of the Veterans Department when I was in Salem last couple of days. And, uh, yeah, yeah. And so she was really interested about coming out sometime and, um, also met the new Oregon Health, uh, Authority Director, which she seemed very competent, which is not something we've had there for a while. And so I, I talked to her also. She was going to be doing some regional trips. And I said, well, if you're coming to the region, please understand the bend in Primeville are extremely different. And, uh, she seemed willing to come meet us as well as Madras. I kind of said, you know, you can't, any one of us can't represent all of us. So you need to come see all of us. So.
Yeah. And I, um, I don't have the schedule for her trip to Central Oregon yet, but as soon as I do, I'll, I'll make that point, reiterate it and let you all know what happened.
Sweet. Okay, uh, I don't think there's any decision to be made.
No, no, we didn't. Okay.
Other than I'll get him back in front of you all.
Okay.
All right, we have, um, two separate grant awards coming, um, that are next on the agenda. Both of them are from Central Oregon Health Council. One is for twenty-five thousand dollars um, that Creek County would be the fiscal agent for. The funds are to be used for overdose prevention and response work. Um, Central Oregon Overdose Prevention Response Coalition serves Creek issues and Jefferson County. I chair that group. And so I think us being able to be the fiscal agent for those funds just further assures that we make sure that we're benefiting from the work that is happening, um, based on investment of those dollars. I believe, so the project budget is in there. We wrote it, um, fairly generally so that our stakeholders and community partners can look at all of the funding that is available in the region. And we can use these funds to fill in any gaps. So we don't have exact investment. We don't know exactly how the dollars will be invested now out of them. They have to be used within the scope of the Central Oregon Overdose Prevention and Response Coalition. So I can write an update on that when we do have a, a work plan identified.
Perfect. I'd entertain a motion.
I might add real quick because it might need to be in the motion is that, um, what you all have in front of you is the print version and to accept the award, I'll have to go in and electronically sign. So you would be motioning to give me the ability to sign on your behalf once. Your motion is carried.
I'll make a motion to approve this in Oregon Health Council twenty-five thousand dollar grant for the overdose prevention. On, uh, and to also authorize Katie to sign the contract.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next one is really similar. Um, one of the benefits of us chairing the Cooper Coalition is, um, we see all of these funding opportunities come across in a timely manner. So we also applied specifically on behalf of Creek County. So in addition to the funds that we got for the region, we received twenty-five thousand dollars that would, um, specifically for Creek County. The same model, same funding source, um, same or similar objectives. It will just be, um, completely, these funds will completely be dedicated to Creek County work. And I would also be, um, signing this one online if it is that.
Okay, I make, I, I make a motion to approve Katie to be able to sign for the, the Medicaid reimbursement. I'm not sure quite, number ten. I have it here, but.
Central Oregon Health Council twenty-five thousand dollar grant for overdose prevention in Creek County.
And I second your motion.
To be signed out of court.
It's got the words down.
Yes, be signed out of court.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have my last one for today. Uh, I have a, an amendment to our Pacific Source Medicaid contract for Health and Human Services. Uh, we were able to negotiate a per member, per month, um, payment that would come to public health specifically to support our perinatal care coordination program. That's a program that had historically been funded by grant dollars through Central Oregon Health Council. It's been, um, a little over seven years in the running. And we have a, a thirty-two hour week coordinator in our office. Um, when those grant funds ended, we, um, had done a bunch of work on sustainability to create billing systems, get our coordinator certified in a variety of different, um, areas like lactation consulting, community health worker certification. And those allowed for some sustainability of the program, but it did fall short of funding the full program. This funding from Pacific Source would cover, um, that gap and a little bit more. So we'll be able to shift some funds back to our nurse home visiting programs that were kind of filling in the perinatal care continuum program. This is a huge win. I'll, um, give kudos to Rick Treven for, he's, um, been part of that negotiation process, contract negotiation process for a long time. He was a great advocate for us and for the perinatal care program. Um, our partners in Deshute County as well, since, uh, perinatal care is a regional program that we also implement locally. Uh, they also advocated strongly to have, uh, Medicaid funds directed specifically to public health. So it's been a big win. Um, and I believe the dollar amount specifically we're estimating to support our program is fifty-six thousand, one sixty for fiscal year twenty-five. It'll kick in, um, this year though, so we'll, we're anticipating, um, almost nine thousand, nineteen thousand dollars this fiscal year to come in.
I apologize to you, Katie. I got on the wrong agenda thing, but I make a motion to, do you need a motion for signing? Or how, how do we need to do this?
I believe you all would be signing this one.
Okay. So I move to approve the Pacific Source Medicaid contract amendment.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say congratulations. This is a, a lot more efficient way to, um, finance that and more stable source of income. And so perfect. Great job you made.
Yeah.
Keep it up. Uh, it needs, although you kind of screwed me up by having a discussion, Brian, that was not very off. Uh, it, it, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
You ruined up my cadence.
Last chance to talk.
I'm fine. No, I'm happy for you to talk. I just screwed up my deal.
Okay.
Andy, are you going to talk about the, uh, audit?
Hey, good morning, Judge and commissioners. Uh, just be real brief. Uh, in your packet is a copy of the audit of twenty-three. You're into June thirty, five, twenty, twenty-three. In that you have an unqualified opinion of the independent auditors, uh, no issues, um, with their reporting or incurred during the performance of their audit. Uh, just point out, uh, the timeliness of this report relative to what has been the case for the past number of years. You know, getting it, you know, didn't quite get it done by twelve thirty-one. That's certainly the goal. Um, and. that's certainly the goal, and a vast improvement, and given that Christina is in the office financially without an accountant, and also taking on an ERP project, you know, congratulations to her and her team, and thank them very much for the efforts that they put forward. Glad to address any questions you may have on the audit. I would point out, you know, a couple of items you might find on page, you know, on the Management Analyst, Management Analysis and Discussion section of the report that you'll find, I believe starting around page eighty, eighty-two of your packet, there's, Christina does a good, you know, discussion in there about the financial highlights. Bottom line, county's net assets increased last year by about six point three million dollars, about seven and a half percent. With that, a couple of things to, to note, a big portion of the revenue increase in last year was intergovernmental. These are grants associated with the federal money that is being recognized as a pass-through that was about a few million dollars, but that number's up ten million over the prior year. The revenue coming out of community development, that was down, but overall, you know, revenue ultimately up. Beyond that, let you guys read that report at your leisure, and I'm glad to address any questions you may have today.
No, I just am really impressed that with all the stuff they've got going on, they were able to get this done, and have a good report.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Do we have to sign it or accept it, or is that just kind of a explanation of what's going on?
Yeah, it's in the record, is being received and delivered.
I, I think I signed that a little bit.
Yeah, you've already signed the management rep letters and so forth.
Perfect. All right, Sarah? How you been doing?
Doing well. Good morning, there are Beeler's Cook County Library Director. I'm here this morning because each year, public libraries in Oregon apply for Ready to Read Grant money. If we apply, we get the money, and I have before me a check for nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to be used for summer reading for youth age zero through fourteen. So we're here today for, to ask if we can accept this money for a summer reading program.
Yes, please.
Do a good job, Sarah. I make a motion to accept the nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollar check from Ready to Read Grant.
Thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Get that money and run. There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, aye.
I think, wasn't there an order with that acceptance?
We have an order.
So that the motion should approve the order, reference the order number.
Oh, okay, well, let me go, let me go back here. Order two oh seven four, two oh two four dash oh nine, in the matter of accepting a grant of nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars from Oregon State Library for the Ready to Read Program. Will you accept the amended motion, please?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you for keeping us straight, John. I was excited the kids could read, I didn't even have to, I didn't want to go too detailed. There we go.
Kelly?
Morning Judge, Commissioners, CaliCoppo Airport Manager. What you have in front of you is a recommendation to award for engineering for a five-year contract. The requirement of the FAA in applying and using the federal funds for the airport requires us to have a on-call engineer. We've gone through a request for a qualification process per the FAA's policy and our policy. You'll see at the bottom, the, the three firms that we, that we scored, and the staff recommends to award to Precision Approach Engineering.
Perfect. They've done a good job for us so far.
Yes, yes, I'm going to continue.
Commissioners, this was kind of a technical RFQ we did, the motion is appropriate, so I would recommend a motion to name Precision Approach Engineering as the most qualified firm and to direct staff to begin negotiations.
Seven. I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Galen.
Galen? Long time no see, buddy. How you been?
Good, busy.
Yeah, good?
Yeah.
So this morning, we just want to revisit our county investment policy. Per ORS, we should be reviewing this annually. It was last adopted in August of twenty-twenty-two, so this is just an annual revisit to that. There are a couple of changes to the investment policy, as you'll note in your packet there. First and foremost, just adopting some new language that the Oregon Short Term Fund Board has recommended that all counties adopt in their investment policy, and just really has to do with the rating of the securities that we're purchasing. Moving from the highest rating of the various agencies out there that we bonds to the lower, or sorry, reverse that, from the lowest to the highest rating. So then the other piece of that too is, you know, much the same as we've, you know, reformed our, our county court, incorporating a county administrator, delegating some daily authorities to the county administrator. We're also kind of working that balance with myself and the finance director here. So as part of this update to the policy, we are proposing to shift the authority, the delegation of investment decisions as it pertains to the daily operations, to the finance director as opposed to the treasurer. A prime example of this is, you know, we have several bonds coming mature every month. We have to make a decision whether we're going to reinvest those, you know, extend them out for another two years, sometimes up to five years, or if we're going to cash those, or let those bonds mature and cash them out. We found, Christine and I found, just over the past year, that her having that daily knowledge, that real-time knowledge of the cash flow needs of the county at any given moment, really expedite being able to get back to those guys, our investment brokers, GPA. A lot of times we get that notification, we need to respond within a day or two to let them know what we're going to do with that, that maturity. So, so we are shifting that, that authority to the finance director as part of this proposed investment policy. That doesn't absolve the treasurer from being involved in any, any way, shape, or form, just it allows us to be proactive and, and on top of things, providing timely responses by the GPA. Aside from those two, those two changes, the investment policy is the same as what we approved in August of twenty-twenty-two. So happy to answer any questions.
Don't have any, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, are you?
Absolutely.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's a good move.
For sure. And thank you, guys.
So before we move on, I might recommend a motion to approve the changes of the county's investment policy as discussed today.
So I will make a move, motion to approve the policy that is presented before the court, the red lines through it on our investment policy. Anything more? Anything you want to do?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Rick?
Hi, I'm Rich Levin. I'm the CEO of Best Care Treatment Services and the Community Mental Health Director for Cook County. So we have up the, the County Financial Assistance Agreement for Community Mental Health. So for Community Mental Health, we have two big chunks of big contracts. One is this financial agreement from the state to the county, which then by contract comes to Best Care, and then to provide the services. And then what you should be seeing in the next couple of weeks is the contract with Pacific Source, which we concluded last week. Last week? Yeah. And so that should be coming to the county momentarily, so that should be up soon. I just wanted to give a real quick update about what we've been doing. So actually, the services are going pretty well, they're actually, I'm liking the services that we're doing. We're making a very big investment in getting a new electronic health record, and that, it'll be the same electronic health record that the hospital and Mosaic have, so much better integration. What we're seeing is our clients are coming in ever sicker, both medically and psychiatrically, and so we're just seeing a number of many, many cases where we need better integration across medical and mental health, and so that will allow that to happen. It also allows us to run data better. And then we have mobile crisis that's up and going in this community. We have rapid access for both psychiatry and counseling services. We, our staffing has stabilized. You know, during the pandemic, we had a lot of staff turnover, and that has really stabilized. I think Angela is still missing one key position, which is an adult mental health supervisor, but otherwise, core positions are in there. Coming forward, I think we are in line to, this is obscure but important, there's something called the Certified Community Behavioral Health Center, and we have that in Jefferson County, and Deschutes County has had it for quite a while. There's nine counties that have this. I think we're in line in twenty-twenty-five to bring this in, and this brings a bunch of federal dollars and allows us to expand services. So we're sort of next in line with the state, I've been talking to them a lot about this. So then one of my focuses, strategic plan, is a focus on better forensic psychiatry, and so we basically have these multiple streams of funding that are serving the same population, and those are the people who are severely mentally ill, hard to reach, hard to engage, and keep landing in the criminal justice system. And so they come in, technically it's, you know, aid and assist, or civil commit, or guilty but insane, or jail divert, but they're really the same people, and so we've been working to set up our services and then had a very productive meeting, I think yesterday, with the district attorney to try to get better community collaboration. So we're all, you know, the state police, the sheriff, community corrections, the jail, mental health, we're all seeing the same people, we need to have a coordinated response about how to deal with them. So that's our goal with that. Any questions about this?
No, I appreciate you trying to solve problems and, you know, just working with us and taking care of the most vulnerable people in our community.
Yeah. Okay.
Was there any? Is there any deliverable on this?
There's a signature we need from you guys.
Should I entertain a motion?
We're into it.
Well, I know the pain that tells me what to do.
Well. Or I make a motion to approve our signature for the Community Mental Health Program Funding Agreement Number O-two-six-oh-oh-seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's not the same number I have, maybe I'm looking at a different.
The number for this funding agreement is, as you heard, zero-two-six-zero-zero-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
I was on the wrong page on Katie's deal, so it's only fair, Brian.
Under Court Member Updates, I talked a little bit about it with Katie, about the veteran spokes, the OHA person, excuse me. I also attended a fair dinner and got to meet with a bunch of the legislators that helped get us some of that funding recently. They are in the process of trying to get, I think it's a certain amount to split among all the counties for fairgrounds. So it would be another, I think they're looking at maybe two-hundred-and-fifty thousand this year to get to the fairgrounds, and then next long session, it looks like they're going to take up that ability to get rid of the one percent ceiling.
On the lottery.
On the lottery, and seems like there's a lot of positive feedback for that, and so more to come, but that was something that we were, as AOC, pushing really hard when we got to meet these different legislatures from all over the state.
Yeah, they didn't get it done last year, the session was over, so I'm glad to see they're moving forward, because we definitely need it.
Great, anything else? All right, do you mind if we take a five-minute break before we go to executive?